President.
Nathan Larson.
Yes.
Robert Foster.
Yes.
Jennifer Barnes.
Here.
Steven Kim.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, the next item is item number D, adopt the agenda. Do I hear my board members?
Still approval.
Uh, there's a motion on the table to move.
Second.
To approve, and so second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Okay, next item is consent items. And we'll go to number one, which is recognition. Retirement and, uh... Yes, reservation, okay. Okay, we have a number of those individuals in there. Do we have any question? For the board?
Just sorry, I see some of them go at home.
Yeah. Any comment on, uh, the public?
We have two consent items.
Two consent items?
Yeah.
Okay. Cool. And then number two is the approval of the following contract on that issue. And, um, that's number two. And there are two items on that one, so we're going to vote. Each of the... Who made a motion? Consent?
I'll move for you to approve the consent item.
So move, Mr. Foster.
Second.
So second. Larson. And, um, any discussion on that item? See none? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Five zero. The next item is, uh, for any individuals out, uh, out, uh... Out here in the public who want to address the board of some of these items, uh, or have a concern, please do so, and... Individuals desiring to address the board, under three. Uh, matters not appearing on the agenda but want to speak to that issue or idea or concern. And we're be willing to, if there's more than one person, please line up. So I can see you, a number of people lining up back here, so we can go with your name, please. Another first one. Of course, for the record.
Yes. Carol Rodriguez, President, CTC. CTC is concerned about the number of items on this board meeting agenda. It was originally, a couple of years ago, the board started the second meetings of the month and started them as sing- single-issue informational, uh, study sessions. Um, and that's usually what they're called, but this one is called a special board meeting. And, um, yet before, it was kind of, uh, we were led to believe that it could be one of these, um, single-issue type, uh, study sessions. Um, I just think it's a little confusing for people not knowing ahead of time what's going on. Um, and I'm just urging the board that is either go back to having a single-issue, um, study session, that second meeting, or perhaps start to think about having a second board meeting a month, because that was the way it was done, um, quite a few years ago until the, uh, board at that time let, limited, or reduced the number down to one a month. So perhaps at this time, maybe, since there are so many things on this agenda, maybe, um, the board needs to address going back to two a month, so that they can do, get all the information they need and also, um, do the district's work. But I'm, I'm just asking the board to take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yep, okay, I don't see anybody standing behind you, but, uh, we'll go on to the next item. The next item would be action items themselves. Number one, which is human resources assistant superintendent job description. And, uh, I bring that present, uh, before the board. There's an attachment called A dash A1. Board member. This is a very vital, uh, position in itself, because not only are we searching for, uh, in a position to hire someone who is more, more educated and qualified to continue, uh, to start up our, our human resources assistant, uh, human resource office, or division, I call them divisions, but, um, the office itself and to work forward, the job description is before us to approve. We've reviewed this. It is the quality that we're looking at, and I'm only asking... Mr. Donaldson, to, to give us more background on the issue. Thank you.
I knew.
I knew I was going to take my...
Thanks.
Yeah.
It's nice to finally meet some of you, since I wasn't at the last working. It's very nice to be here and appreciate the opportunity to talk to you live, too. According to this job description, the complexity of this district has really increased. It's become much larger. Uh, you are about nine thousand students. The number of issues that the HR person is addressing, when we took a look, when I took a look at your full job description, we really weren't being dealt with. We've taken a really hard look at this one, looked at job descriptions for HR people around the state that are addressing the same kind of district, elementary of a box from this size. It really deals with the complexity kinds of issues, the scope of the kinds of things that you're asking this person to do. With Pat retiring, it's an exceptional time for you to take a look at what are the requirements as you go out and recruit for a person to replace her. A good time to take a look at whether that job description as it was, uh, is still adequate. And in my review, I think we found some things working good, Martin. Uh, Superintendent Martinez, I should say, excuse me, uh, that we can take a look at. For example, in the essential functions and duties, uh, that you have before you, there was a lot of conversation in this about, mm, systems kind of approach of what we're doing. Taking a good look at the systems that are there, doing research to see what really works and what will work for this district, not only now, but in the years to come. So it's being proactive. It's a good opportunity to change these, this job description. You don't get a chance to do that very often. And again, it really compares with an assistant superintendent position. Having been an, I know that, and I've been in a lot of other districts and county offices, so I have the ability to experience that, take a look at where you are, and the complexity that we're facing in our district really is that of, you would expect to see an assistant superintendent doing it. This has nothing to do with the person that was here before. Instead, it's taking a proactive approach to saying, we have the opportunity, what should it be, how can we change it, how can it meet the needs of this district, not only now, but in the upcoming years. That's just a quick synopsis. Spent a lot of time going through every item, comparing it to what we saw as a requirement now, but might not have been addressed in the previous job description, and then the conversations with Superintendent Martinez, and Mr. Stratton, working through what do we think, what we think it might go. Now, there's interfaces with Sanders' work in CNI two, especially around the credentialing fees and making sure we have a fit for the kinds of programs that we're developing, and that we have a screen of people that can meet the requirements of those classes. There's a lot of productivity to this process. Now, I don't need to continue talking, but you have the job description in front of you. That's the brief synopsis of our reality. Let go of the box.
Thank you, Mr. Donaldson. I'm asking the board members if they have any questions. Uh, Ms. Farnum?
The salary is, uh, similar or commensurate to other personnel directors in the same position?
It's a much closer curve to where the other assistant superintendents would be. Now, there's a comparability state that goes into this. We are competing because of proximity with districts that can pay considerably more. And that's, that's a base reality. Where you are now, currently, it would be very difficult for you to compete with the kind of individual you're recruiting for this position, if not impossible. That's getting to be a long answer to your question. I wish it were higher than this. Bottom line. The people that I've worked with and developed in other places that I've been are able to command salaries that are of a higher nature than this. This is the framework that we work in. You know, this is our district. There's a lot of positives here that a lot of other places don't have, the benefit schedule, to our location. It's an elementary district with somewhat confined issues. Long answer to your question, it needed to be here rather than the lower rate that goes along with the assistant superintendent chamber.
I think also, um, you're asking us, this is considerably lower than districts that are half our size.
Do we know what Alisal School District?
Thanks.
I'm sorry. Do we happen to know what Alisal School District placed case for the same position?
I do not. I know it's one of the districts, but I don't have a...
I could...
No, I was just curious.
Let me step out of context for a second. The people that I've worked with, people understand different contexts. They're in the one seventy to one ninety range. Okay? Now, that's not meant to mean anything other than different places, different sizes of districts, but we're still on the low end here. Nevertheless, this is the top of comparability of what our assistant superintendents would be in here.
Okay. Farnum? Um, sound good? Sound good? Over here. Carly, any questions?
I can make a statement. I think if we are going to put this position as assistant soup, if we are going to recruit the people, just like you said, we, it's just the same thing, I believe, with teachers. We, we have to increase our salary to be able to attract the people that we desire. So you have to make a competitive, even if you say it's a low end, but it has to, uh, numbers to, similar, and we can't just go, okay, Alisal. We, we're, we have Carmel, we have San, no, I know, Santa Cruz. We have, this will try counting even in Samanito, where we're, we have to compete with them. That's people we're trying to pull, and even trying to pull from Santa Clara County, too. So I, I think this is a, uh... That's a good way to start to recruit for people we need. Would I?
Okay. Excuse me, and if we find we can't get what we want at this price, we'll have to raise it. That's all. You know, we'll have to, same for, same for our special ed teachers and our P E teachers. We may have to pay more. That's all. Okay. My board members already attention?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, yes. We have another speaker here.
Carol Rodriguez, CTC president. Um, I just had a couple of questions about this. I understand, um, um, talking, having talked to Superintendent Martinez and Mr. Donaldson before, um, about this, but, um, I wanted to make sure that, that I understand that there will be three assistant superintendent positions. And I'm wondering, is this going to be part of a, um, reorganization or some changes? I'm a little concerned with just opening this one position without kind of looking at the overall. And so I'm wondering, is this the start of kind of looking at that kind of organizational chart change, or?
This is simply about filling a vacancy in our top lead position in our HR department right now. Reorg, you know, we'll be looking at, I'll be looking at the organization over the course of this year. I think even the management schedule, we're, you know, we're, this is, this salary is in accordance with the other assistant soup salaries, so we're not going to propose a different salary for one assistant soup versus the others. Um, but I do think that, um, reorganization is, well, we'll get it, I'm not proposing that at this time. We're looking, we're, we're looking to fulfill a vacancy, and we're looking to draw a pool of candidates that are the highest quality to meet the qualifications for the district of our size, um, and fulfill the functions that are happening in that position.
Well, I just ask the board to, um, consider that, um, although I understand the reasonings for this, that, um, we're adding a new position without really looking at how that position fits into the whole structure of our management. And I'm a little concerned, I'm, I'm a little concerned with just adding a new position like that without looking at the whole, that, the whole system.
I'll just respond, I think, uh, Mr. Donaldson explained that the functions and the scope of the work of this position, um, fit with the title that is now given to this. And I think that's, that's, you know, for us, as we look at the duties and the scope of work, that's, that is necessary for this, if it's an assistant super.
Any other public comments here? I don't see anybody behind the podium. Okay, say none. Motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the job description for assistant superintendent human resources and the title change from director of human resources to assistant superintendent human resources.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Yep. Second, wanting to make the motion. Any discussion by the board? Board members? Say none? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright. That's a five zero, uh, vote on that issue. And, uh, to underscore this, uh, we're looking at quality, depth of experience, and also the, not only the experience of being in schools and working in this kind of environment, but also the depth that goes into organizing and working with people, and at the same time, working with administration, faculty, all that up above. And that's what we promise to do, since we place ourselves that we're going to work for the betterment of our children and their parents. Yeah, thank you. Okay, that's a six, five zero vote on that one. Next item, please. Action item number two. Okay. This is, um, on, Mr. Donaldson again, and the subject matter is provisional intern permit. And we're going to go down the line of each, one by one. Yes, sir. You have the floor.
Alright. Provisional permits are fairly neat for this district from what I understand. You maybe have a very low number, uh, previous, maybe one or two. I'm not sure of all that. Let me preface it this way, and I'm going to give you more information than you ever want. If you're reading the newspaper at all, if you're sensitive to what's going on across the state of California, if not across our country, and Carol and I were talking about this maybe a couple hours ago, there is a tremendous shortage of teachers, especially in the state of California. I understand that Alisal in the paper showed up as Dean fully staffed, I'm not too sure how they did that, knowing something about the processes that were going on before. This isn't about Alisal, this is about us, this is about the entire state. We are short of about seven teachers right now of having fully qualified people within our district to do our positions. That means that we have, at this point, long-term sales. Now, when you have a critical need, and you're not able to do it and do a number of things to try to involve interns, interns have passed both the C-BAS and the CSET or some instructional tests to get to where they are. Then you go down one step, you take a look at people that have passed the C-BAS, but haven't gone through the CSET part of qualifications, but yet are qualified to teach our children. We're taking a look at all people who are coming out of Cal Teach and other programs that we might be, uh, professional interns right now, provisional interns. Let me address this now, and this will be for your use later on. One for each, and I think there's enough to go across the other seven. Let me copy, as those are being handed out to you. I'm going to speak to some of the issues that are there.
Thank you.
What I've done is gone through and just highlighted a couple of things, and each is a thing, copies that have been handed to you. And this is not to just lay the conversation down with a lot of people. This information was pulled from the CTC with the Commission on Teacher Challenging Websites, specifically as they relate to PIPs. The last board meeting, there was non-donations, we pulled this item from the consent agenda for bringing it now for action, because it has to be deliberated on and voted by the board on item, by item basis for each of, and there are seven we're bringing forward to you at this point. Okay? So we used to have emergency permits, those have been phased out. And we now have this PIP process. Our focus is, as you read through this at your leisure, not necessarily now, we're focusing on multiple subjects, primarily a kind of credentialing, a kind of element, but we have some single subjects, and this provides for that also. But it's primarily multiple subjects. Folks, in the second page, in, in page two of five, it gives you some more detail around that. I'm going to skip to page three of five, and I'm sorry, we don't have this for everybody in the audience. But what we have to verify is that the person, we, we have met these requirements that are listed on that page. We've done that. We'll provide the support to the CTC that verifies that we have done those things. We've done due diligence. Okay? Uh, notice that I highlighted this action as in boldface, must be on the agenda, not a part of the consent agenda, which is what we ran into the last time, and I would take responsibility for that. That's all I wanted to cover on this document. Again, this is the entire website as it relates to PIPs. Okay? Why do we have PIPs? We don't have enough teachers to teach the classes that we require.
And PIPs are?
Provisional intern permits. Thank you. It's not the information I passed out, but obviously, you know, Captain Flub, a pretty few get caught, he's PIPs and STICS and all that other kind of stuff. By the way, it's kind of interesting, probably to sixty-seven new teachers in the district that go away, and I asked somebody, you know, who are the PIPs in the room? And nobody raised their hand. Funny one day I did, and somebody said, what's a PIP? And the gentleman said, I am one. What, what's the PIPs? Well, you can't create teachers where some don't exist. So the issue becomes, we become much more aggressive in our recruitment, including, I understand we've done this before, but I think you need to get, we need to get aggressive in our out-of-state recruitments. Uh, that's not to mean we're not kind of, you know, not value the people that are here, but when they aren't here, it's incumbent on us to do something about them. In past lives, I got the chance to recruit out-of-state for people who were credentialed, reciprocity with where they were credentialed, and they were fully bilingual, so they've met our needs. We also, I think, need to work on our relationships with the Catholic universities that provide these, these teachers, so perhaps we can get in and get first credit to some of them. There are reasons we can get that, uh, when people are dressed up, even when we aren't paying as well as others. It has to do with how you support the new people coming in. So in terms of our recruitment, one of the concerns would be when you're hiring a PIP, and I appreciate the call from your member Barnes, ahead of time, which is what's your control if they don't work out? PIPs are a little different, or provisional intern permits are a little different than our regular probationary or even our interns. They are not guaranteed a job. If, if we find that there's a performance issue, we, you know, you don't release them lightly, but if it doesn't work out for them, if they are not up fit for the class that they've been hired to teach, they can be released. Very different from Pro Ones, Pro Twos. They will all be hired into our district as on emergency permits. Every one of them. Now, we have to balance those with people on leave, but we'll do all of that. And what, what's that, that is ensuring again that we have the ability to release them if there's a performance issue. Do we expect that? No. Though we have to be ready, should present itself, and the process that we're putting in place behind us in HR gives us the ability to do that. That's...
Can I, um, also address that, that we have, we had a principals meeting this last week, um, where we were already beginning to strategize, because we know that we have a higher number of interns in our classrooms, and we will have a high number of, um, teachers that are on this provisional internship, um, permit, that we're going to look for specific ways to support those teachers. And our goal is to, um, ensure that they receive all the support that we can possibly give them within the time that they have to give and compensate them for that time. And to help them be successful, so they can either go on and earn their teaching credential and be successful in their placement. And so, um, now with what you just said about, you know, the, the responsibility we have to ensure that they're delivering quality instruction, we also want to make sure that that is supported with, um, different levels of support for, um, teachers that are ending up in this particular status point. So we're exploring ways to, um, give them additional support.
And one piece along the same lines. It's interesting to me, to all of us, that in the induction program in the state, which comes out of SB twenty forty-two, I had a chance to testify for those issues originally, there are coaches that are mandated in the credentialing process for new teachers new to the profession. Induction coaches. You are not allowed to provide that kind of support to either interns or to provisions, okay? PIPs in this case. That's one of the things, going with what you were talking about, that when we hire academic coaches, there's a possibility for them to provide some of that support you're talking about. We need to find other ways to provide support in addition to that, because it's kind of interesting that the people that need it the most in the state's plan are provided the least support from state-level funding.
And that's why we're looking for those actions.
You got it.
Good. Comments? Questions? What number? Action item, okay, and again, ready for, uh...
Motion to approve.
Yeah, wait, didn't they ask, see if the public wants to speak to the center? Hello? I don't see anybody raising their hand, everything that counts. So this call on, um, Clarion?
Motion to approve provisional internship permits on action item two.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor?
A second.
There's a second. Mr. Foster, second. Any discussion? Questions on the, um, item?
We have to do this one at a time, is that true, Mr. Donaldson?
Yes, one at a time. Second, number one.
Correct.
Each, each provisional has to be approved one at a time?
I know. Uh, would you amend your, uh, your motion to include A, B, C, D, E, F, and G?
Yes, okay. Uh, motion to approve provisional internships, or internship permits. Uh, A, Ruby Soto. B, Juan, I'm going to say this, Chavez. Uh, C, Cynthia Torres. D, Leandra Magnaleno. I hope I spelled it right.
Magnaleno.
E, Catalina Garcia. F, Jeffrey Smallwood. And G, Rosalyn. Alright. Rosenelli, thank you for my forward reading. Lopez.
Miss Lopez, yes, and I want to make a second. There's a motion, it's Clarion, and it's a second, but Mr. Foster, I do want to make a comment before we call for vote. Uh, Ms. Garcia, number E, is no relationship to my family. Okay. Call for the vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Any names saying none? Going to the next item, which is information. Okay, number one, facilities update. Go ahead. Our, our superintendent's going to say some comment. She said comment, yeah? Sorry.
I'd like to, um, have Mr. Stratton and Mr. Ryan, please move forward, and they will give you a facility, uh, report update that we will have, um, our different campuses, along with, um, some replacement value information, and also a long-term depth. Thank you. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Stratton.
Okay. Thank you very much.
This is Stratton.
Yes.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, trustees, Superintendent Martinez. It's our pleasure to be here, uh, to go over this as you requested at our, uh, last board meeting. You have a very comprehensive, detailed report in your board packet, and I trust that everyone's had a chance to look at that or will look at it. I would recommend you retain that for reference because it has a lot of quantitative data on classrooms by site. A just, this is an information to the board about that report. I won't restate what is in there, but again, I know you can read. Facilities review. Our purpose tonight is to tell you what our facilities inventory are and its utilization rates. We want to look at near-term projects and take a look at our existing debt financing. I like to call all of our facilities learning platforms, whether it's a classroom, or a gym, or an MPR. Our students learn in all those areas and the sports fields. And we have, as you see here, on our fourteen schools, we have one hundred and thirty-one acres. We have a total of almost a million square feet under roof, eight hundred and thirteen thousand plus. And most of those roofs, I'm happy to tell you, don't leak. They did a few years ago. And we'll be tested this fall. We have four hundred and eighty-two classrooms, and three hundred and seventy-eight are in service as a classroom. Our utilization rate varies by site. The low of sixty-nine percent is at Lincoln, not counting Veranda Elementary, Dual Immersion Academy, where the utilization rate is really only ten percent because we still lease some of those facilities to the county one rate. The highest is Roosevelt, where we have only one classroom available, and I'll talk about that as we move forward. Hang on, I'll get this in or later here. There we go. I'd like to talk to each of these because I think they're really important for you to understand as you go through the data that you have in your file and for reference. We have a real urgent need for classrooms at Los Padres and at Roosevelt. Roosevelt at a utilization rate of ninety-six percent. Los Padres has been bursting at the seams year after year, and we took down seven portables that we had leased and built fourteen permanent classrooms about three years ago and occupied those. At this point, we have a couple of ways to relieve Los Padres' crowded, but we anticipate that site will continue to grow. And if you'll recall, it's not a very large site either. It'll reflect in your data that it's about seven acres. So, those are two things. Classroom cost is about two hundred grand a classroom by the time you get the doors open. We have an old multi-purpose room at Los Padres that now is available for us to rehab into classrooms or for alternate use, and that's because we built the Don Alonzo Vaughn Memorial Multi-Purpose Facility and opened that some two and a half years ago. What that would allow us to do is build a library and two computer labs, and we have some draft designs for that. The S of construction came in too high, so we've asked for some revisions. And that would move the library and the computer lab where they are now into two classrooms and give us two classrooms for immediate growth. Beyond that, we have seven more classrooms that we've leased at Los Padres, and those classrooms are old funky portables that are going to need to go away. We'll turn them back and get rid of them. And part of our master plan, we propose to replace the footprint of those seven classrooms with a two-story, fourteen-classroom unit. We have an urgent need to replace and modernize the fire alarm at Sherwood. It's an old dated alarm. It's not as safe as our other schools, and that doesn't mean to say that it's unsafe, although today, for every day of school, we have a fire guard on station because Chaping Construction severed one of the lines going to some of the buildings, outbuildings. And so, while we have students there, we have a fire guard now until we get that cable replaced. We have a gas line issue at Laurelwood. There's been significant movement, and at Laurelwood, we are starting to see that some of the gas lines, which can be as low as forty-five inches below the surface, are starting to leak. And we need to go in and sleeve those and replace those. Finally, or not finally, but close to the end, Roosevelt, we did the front of the windows, they look great. Next summer, we're going to do the rest of the windows at Roosevelt. Every time I go there, the teachers are smiling and beaming about how nice it is, and they show me how the windows work. And we're going to follow that with the same thing at Lincoln. And they'll be period correct, historically presentable windows that preserve the historic nature of both schools. This summer, we also ripped out and redid a playground at Roosevelt. It was the worst in the district. The next two worst, El Gab is the worst, and Lincoln is right behind it. We paid for the Roosevelt one with ERP dollars, Emergency Repair Program dollars. We identified an urgent need in two thousand and eight, and the state gave us the money. Last fall, we had to spend it by just November. If it hadn't been urgent, I don't know when we would have gotten that money from the state. We don't have ERP money for these two, so we'll have to find funds for them. You know? Maybe I'm going to shoot this thing.
Here.
Thank you. Additionally, we have safety and security issues that we want to address. We've modernized the fronts of our schools and the access through the office at many of our schools where we have positive identification. If you come in, you're signed in, and then you can move into the school. The two schools we don't have that and can't get are Lincoln and Sherwood. And we need to do both of those. Your packet addresses dollars for all of these projects within the detailed report that we gave you. And finally, Veranda Elementary, we've got some additional perimeter security to add. We've done most of it now, but we need to continue to improve that as we expand Veranda Elementary Dual Immersion Academy. Next one, please. My thumb is too big for this one. You can't do those things without money, so I wanted to address what debt we have, and that will lead to where we might have money. This slide shows three chunks of debt that we have. The top one, we have a COP, a Certificate of Participation, okay? That was a Q-skip, Qualified School Construction Bond money that we got in two thousand and ten, and we got it interest-free from the Fed government. They were going to pay the interest, we were going to get the money and pay it back starting in two thousand and twenty-three. With C frustration, we paid part of it now. We paid part of the interest, forty-five thousand a year, and then starting in two thousand and twenty-three, two point two million annually. The next piece is we had an eighty million dollar bond. We sold A and B issues of that to get to twenty-five million or just minus. We took fifteen of that to pay off previous debt, and we used a little over ten to modernize the fronts of schools and add security. You can see the details there. Finally, we floated a loan, if you'll recall, to fund the solar project. And we are the first district in this county to have comprehensive solar, or ninety percent off the grid everywhere except Veranda Elementary. It's a six point six million dollar note. And truth is, we're paying for it from savings of our PG&E bills. I get rebates every month between ten and fifteen thousand dollars, and we have much lower bills. Next one, please. So, our conclusions, our facilities are aging. Well, you know that. Our oldest schools are over ninety years old. Our newest school is ten years old, Veranda Meadows. Every school takes a high maintenance effort, and it's not going to get any better, it's going to get worse. We don't have any significant bond money on the horizon, so anything we do will need to be funded from Prop thirty-nine, which is our energy bond. We've got almost half a million there. The state's created excessive bureaucracy that you can't even get to. It's truly frustrating. You might have seen the article in the paper. The governor projected fifteen thousand jobs. We've got like eighteen hundred statewide from this because it's so tough to get them the money. The only one making money on it are the consultants who are doing the calculations. We have a general fund deferred maintenance of about two percent a year. And then we will aggressively pursue any grants. An example of a grant we've got and we've expended for security was a COGS grant in conjunction with the high school district and the police department. We got money to try to provide the cameras and servers for our security. For that, I would ask all the questions.
I just have a kind of question and comment. One is, when you said two point two million annually for the COP, what are we going to do in two thousand and twenty-three?
Yes.
Are we putting money away from that? Because that's a huge hit, that in two thousand and twenty-three, you're starting to have to put out too much. I mean, I just think that we need to do what it is.
Yes.
Even though that's eight years from now.
True good news, thanks. We got the money in two thousand and ten, and we're going to pay it back in two thousand and twenty-three through two thousand and twenty-seven dollars. So, we're really going to pay probably seventy or eighty percent cents on the dollar. And yes, we are putting money in Fund Fifty-Six now. So, we'll get ahead of that power curve and not have to write a check when we don't have money in the year two thousand and twenty-three. So, we are looking ahead.
And then the second question, actually, probably words I said. When you're talking about all the different things that we need, are we looking at safety first? I go back to the top priority.
Safety is always first, yes.
I have a comment. I was very glad to hear that we're considering two-story buildings at Los Padres, a very tiny facility, postage stamp. We need all our fields for play, not buildings. And hopefully, if we're going to do two stories there, we can do it at Roosevelt too because that playground has been shrunk enormously. I'd also like to say that, well, I'm glad that we hear, you know, we've heard these action figures on what's happening, but I would also like to suggest that, I've been thinking about this a long time, about how to save space in our classrooms. And back in two thousand and one, I believe it was, or maybe two thousand and two, we had an opportunity to pick up a preschool building that the city wanted to get rid of. And at that time, we can do it. And anytime we have some land available where we could put in a preschool, K one, two, three, if we could have three or four or five or six of those in our district, it would take pressure off the big schools. We could have, at least, I would love to see something like that happen.
We are limited in the types of buildings we can get by the age of the building and how suitable they are for students, and there's some pretty strict limitations there. I would add, per your earlier request, I have talked to, this is, I've talked to Bill Hayward about donating their land and pursuing that. He and I are going to meet in the next week or two.
And, well, maybe not just the donation, but, you know...
I suggest ending a school after his father.
Oh, yeah, right. Long term, you know. We may be able to pay five point thousand a year for, you know, forever, to a percent. You know? And we'd have a lovely side.
I think the president would be right. Any other questions?
Any more questions? But we'll go to the next item. Do we have any public members up here? Please make a line back there. I have the same question come up and up. Your name, please, for record.
Rosei Sanchez, CSCE. Safety has always been an issue and a concern for us. And on the urgent near-term list, there are two items that are alarming to me. One is the fire alarm at Sherwood, since there has been in the past two fires at Sherwood. And then the gas line at Laurelwood. Is there a projected timeline or urgency of when this is going to be getting started?
So, the fire alarm has been designed, and when we get authorization from the board and we identify the source of funding, it's about, I think it says two seventy in the data, I'm not sure. So, as soon as we have the funding identified, we can move forward with that project. But it has been designed, it just is waiting on funding. Gas line is at Laurelwood. I'm very happy to announce that as I was writing this, I was checking data, and we're a little over half done, and we'll finish those next summer.
So, is that urgent?
Oh, but we can't dig during, we can't dig when schools in session, and they've been in the condition that they're in, and we've got them half replaced. So, we're moving forward. It is urgent. It is urgent.
Not a severe safety issue, but we call it urgent in terms of the relevant nature.
Do we have another guest here?
Good evening, Board, Superintendent. My name is Silvia Capuyan. I'm at Roosevelt School, second grade. I wasn't intending to speak, but I know that we are busting at the seams at Roosevelt in terms of numbers, budgets, and you stated in Los Padres, what's going to be done is... And I know you stated that the premises are too old because I was thinking maybe opening up the original Veranda for a few classes. I know the principal for university said that they were busting at the seams also. Today, I received my twenty-ninth student, and so he was given to us by University Park. So, anyway, I made that possibility. I know our numbers are high. I think by year third has thirty-three. Kinder has thirty-one at Roosevelt. That could please be addressed so that I could take that back to our school. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's not an item that's on the board agenda, but I will address it. That we've spent many, many hours in the last, I would say, eight days of school, today's the ninth day, looking at enrollment and specifically at Roosevelt and looking at reducing the numbers specifically in kindergarten where we have thirty-three. I think we probably have thirty-four kids in those classrooms. And looking at our intra-district transfers and moving students, calling. So, that's been going on for the last, I would say, two days. We met with intra-district transfers on Wednesday, and really looking where we can make shifts. It's happening daily.
Do we have another gentleman up front of us on the question? That hand?
Yeah, actually, same end question, maybe a combination of them. Frank Arden, here at Mission Park School. In terms of safety of students, yeah, I agree that this is totally number one priority. So, any upgrades that would improve safety and security at school sites, I think needs to also be given a priority. I know we, you know, we passed a bond measure several years ago that provided for a number of improvements at the schools. And we've seen the fruits of our labors in terms of lobbying our voters to get past that bond measure in two thousand and nine. We had some cyclone fences that surround the campuses, new and improved doors that unlock electronically. I just want to make sure that the board is ensuring that that technology that's been installed is being utilized to its fullest extent. I've noticed, I've brought this up in the past at my own school site where it just appears that there's an ability to go in and out as you please. Anybody can just walk through the front office and gain access to the hallways of the school grounds. So, I know that those mechanisms can lock electronically if we can ensure that that happens just to kind of secure up the facility. And I know that, so here's the question now. I guess Lincoln School has an open access area in the front. What is the plan in terms of getting that area secured? You also mentioned windows at Lincoln. I suppose that'll probably need to occur during the summer months when school is in a session. Is that slated for the next summer? And the last question I had was, you mentioned the Don Chapin Company was responsible for breaking the fire. The fire alarm line, are they on the hook for payment of that damage? That's all I had to say.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I want to ask, Mr. President, trustees, some other questions. The line that Don Chapin and Company broke was not marked, and so they are not on a pay for that. We are, old construction, the wire that was there years ago, that school goes back to the nineteen ninety-four's. In terms of the security, was that the second thing?
The windows, one of those, yeah, at Lincoln.
Windows at Lincoln are a safety issue also, just as they were and remain at Roosevelt. And we'll be moving forward on those. This test, this year to do the front of Roosevelt was very successful. We had some great lessons learned on how to encapsulate the old wood and still have great double insulated, period correct windows on that site. We'll export that for the rest of Roosevelt and to Lincoln. We have the funds identified for that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We have a lady behind the pillar right there. Stand by yourself, please.
Thank you. Marybel Frey, a parent at Lincoln. I was surprised to...